All right, it's June morning, it is 9 o'clock. It's Monday, February 12th, 2018, and I call the county attorney's court. Today we have both meetings from the county leadership and the communications office. Please stand. We're going to begin.
We're heavily honored that we invite your presence here today, and we with pleasure and honor invite you, God, to come and bless the meeting today, all the discussion, the decisions that are made. We seek you first at the beginning of this meeting. We seek your wisdom, your guidance, your insight, most of all, your direction. And we thank you, Lord, in advance for what you're going to do here today, in the name of your son, we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one open and indivisible.
All right, first thing on the agenda is number one, recognition of minutes, Friday, January 22nd, 2018, missions court meeting, and also the special missions court meeting on January 29th, 2018. And the additions and corrections. If none, so I could not, two vouchers to consider enacted upon the approval of the payment of vouchers processed by the county office from the period of January 17th, 2018 through February 7th, 2018. Check numbers 178759, 4179094, and line transfer 1036, 31037, and 48,116 dollars and 71 cents. And is that big because of the three weeks in between? So just tell them, don't freak.
(Inaudible) county judge, I think the motion to be approved without the debate about who can choose it. Six.
Okay. I have a motion in a second.
I have a question here in page 23 of 34. Looks like check number 179015, hand handle pencil or card cups, $250 space display.
Yes, sir. This is all of the, they have the, okay.
Does that, any of that come out of any of the grant fundings? That's, okay. And then my second question is page 29 of 34, check number 179064, all of the check share, 109,000, considering that the annual maintenance for all the different divisions. Do you remind me of the funds that we have to offset that? With which accounts, not necessarily the dollar amounts, but just which line items in the budget?
We have the JP test fund, and then all of the cost.
They all there, because of general fund? Okay. And how did this come in, in terms of what we expected at budget? I think last year it came in higher?
Less than sure.
Less than sure. Thank you.
I have a motion in a second. I'll make a reservation. Five, zero, thank you very much. Free tax office, consider next on tax refunds for overpayment in Kansas. Sure. It's just the usual stuff. Anything you need to add to that? I just wish businesses would be together, decide who pays. That would be nice for me.
I think a motion that we approve the tax refunds for overpayment as presented.
Sorry. I have a motion in a second. I'll make a reservation again. Five, zeros, thank you, thank you. Number four, insurance report, to recognize insurance done report, okay.
There's something unusual on this particular insurance report, but I did want to make mention and draw your attention to the list of insurance payments on the voucher report that will show on the next insurance report. We have had some large claims and just a large number of claims spread across the board. We have 560,881 dollars in claims on the voucher report that will show next on the claims done report. We do have an update scheduled for March the 20th. We have to try to get an update on what's going on with those claims. At this point, the claims are outpacing the data. In other words, we don't have the data yet to determine what's going on with the claims. We just have four claims pending requests that have come through with very large claims amounts, but we don't have the data to determine, you know, what is going on with the claims, whether they're going to be ongoing or if they're out. Don't know at this point. Kathy Davenport and Pat didn't tell me that we have had some claims that appear like they're going to be long term. We've had some new diagnosis since December that look to be any of these claims on, so.
Hey, is that committee still active in meeting on this?
It is. We have committee meetings scheduled, two in March, one to discuss the insurance consultant, and then one to discuss the update. And then Kathy Davenport will also present to the court once she's presented to the insurance advisor.
Can I begin? Who's supposed to begin?
Commissioner Kelly, Commissioner Church, John Coffey, Vicky Shelton, Pat Bowles. I just wanted to give you an update, make sure that.
Yes, you're something, Judge.
I'm sorry. Oh, we're here. Carrie wasn't understanding. Carrie's always. But they became.
Let's move down to number six, roll back so Beth Duke can get on with her day. Number six is Center City, 2018, consider enacted upon the approval of the use of County courthouse grounds for high noon on the square, and also the use of Santa Fe building parking lot to accommodate the Emerald community market for Saturdays, that other events are committed to close post, and these days our family support services party party on July 28th, Tri-State Fair Parade on September 22nd, and Susan G. Cohen Roast and Tur on September 22nd, and also the mayor's hacknery forum on September 29th. I pretty much said it all for you, didn't I?
You're great. You're fantastic. I didn't even need to have my pocket this morning. You gave it all for it. I love you. Now, we want to come back. We love this tradition. We love using the grounds of our beautifully restored Potter County courthouse to welcome the community, people from Amarillo, and even from the entire Panhandle, to come and have a party. I especially love Judge Tanner's nicknames for our event. She has called it, let's see, lunch on the lawn. She's called it fun on the fescue. I don't know what else she's called it.
Fettuccine.
Fettuccine on the fescue. But we have a great event planned for this year. There'll only be nine concerts because July 4th is on a Wednesday, so we won't have one that day. So we have nine great concerts, and we're even planning in July, one of our concerts will be going on. At the same time, I'm bringing Texas Main Street managers from all over our state right here to Amarillo for their summer training, and high noon is going to be a special event where I get to show off your beautiful lawn, beautiful courthouse, and show the rest of Texas all the great things we've done. So I hope you give me permission to come back and play on the county's lawn.
If you could ask the mind is getting on how the market is doing.
Community market, thank you, Commissioner Vaughn. Community market will start our third season on June the 9th. This is something that has really just been embraced by our whole community. We will start with more than 100 vendors. We're very strict. Everything in our market has to be locally grown, produced, baked, or created within 150 mile radius. And in addition to being a fun social event where people come down and buy and talk to the vendors, we've actually created some new businesses. We have so businesses that have started. One business started Sweet Revenge, a hot mustard company, a salsa company. We have a young man who's growing greens and selling to local restaurants that want to do farm-to-table. So even though our market will only be from June the 9th to October 6th, we feel like we're also an economic incubator for some of these entrepreneurs. Some of our entrepreneurs take orders for their, for their goods even when we're not at market, and we feel excited. We're bringing people downtown. It's helped our downtown restaurants, and then it's also growing these businesses. The dates I've asked to use the Santa Fe building parking lot, those are the dates, as you heard Judge Tanner say, those events are older than we are and bigger than we are, and you've got to get it out of the way of the Tri-State Fair Parade and some of those other events. But it's worked out very well because we have so many people downtown, and that way we don't have to cancel market, and it's still right there at 10th and Polk, just across the street.
(Inaudible).
Yes. No, I'll come up. She will.
I move that we approve the use of County House mail for high noon square, and use of Santa Fe building parking lot to accommodate our weekly market for service, that other events are committed to close post. And I think basically that's a great measure.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. I'll make a reservation. Five, zero. Beth Duke, thank you so.
No, thank you. And I couldn't be more excited. Thank you. It's so exciting, and I heard a rumor that the county might have a tent, so that's pretty exciting.
I'd have to purchase it myself, but I'm hoping to have a tent below that.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Unless that's a lot.
I'm not nervous. That's a lot.
Number five, seventh, maintenance grant contract to consider enacted upon the approval of the statewide automated victim notification service grant contract with the Office of the Attorney General of Texas and authorized Judge Tanner to sign the service agreement renewal notice and maintenance contract. Here. This is a grant that's about 2,000, and they just have to, they don't have a question.
It's almost half third this year before we did.
They had some issues at the state. I was on, I think it was a bit of an issue.
It's not our problem.
It's not, however, we're trying to make it our problem. We keep sending you emails, why have you not signed it yet? Why have you not signed it? And they just don't send it, so. That's fine. I have the contract for it, please. Oh, that's all. Okay. I make a motion that we approve the statewide automated victim notification service grant with the Office of the Attorney General of Texas and authorize Judge Tanner to sign the renewal notice and maintenance contract.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. I'll make a reservation again. Five, zero, thank you so much. Number seven, Emerald Box City County Health District, consider enacted upon the following, that we appoint Dr. Wallace Thompson to the Board of Health for three-year term, and to appoint Dr. Rebecca Scott to the Board of Health for three years. This is a letter I got from Mr. Paul, so we see the audience today. And this is something I do every, every year, every two years, and I have no reason to get, so I just hope we don't need to get approval.
Second, for a quick discussion, I mean, Judge, so it looks like a three-year appointment. My only concern is, there's no visibility into this board. I have no idea what they're voting on in terms of the half of this town. We ran into this, I think, with the appraisal board. So as we start to approve these renewals and their three-year segments, I just want to call that out, if there's even a quarterly update, I don't know how often this board needs, but I think we need to be better stewards of these appointees, that we have visibility in that 46th of this court, so I'm just going to raise my hand to that again.
Do we, do we have anybody on this board at all? Is anybody there? No? There's four.
And I, I'm happy to, I think the motion in a second is, is on the floor, so I'm happy to proceed. I just, I want to call out that we probably need an administrative, whether that's quarterly, to come back and give reports to this court of what they're voting on.
I have a motion in a second. I'll make a reservation. Five, zero. All contact.
What's the question prior to leaving then tonight, I'm like, Carrie, have we ever had an individual court that speaks to themselves on that topic?
Okay, number eight, county attorney prosecutor salaries, consider enacted upon the request from the county attorney for budget transfer in order to use funds currently held, and again, supplement itself as a provision.
Good morning. I appreciate the opportunity to come speak to you this morning. As you know, a little backstory, we've been pursuing gambling cases for years and years and years, taking several years off of my life. Over the time, we've generated a fairly healthy fund as a result of enforcement and gambling actions and forfeiting gambling, gambling devices, gambling proceeds, that sort of thing. The code criminal procedure complex that that'd be used for law enforcement or criminal justice purposes. Now to transition to another backstory, over the last three or four years, we've had positions open up in our office. Historically, we would get 10, 15, sometimes 20 qualified applicants. In recent years, we've gotten generally three qualified applicants. We've had a post open for a position in our office right now, and had exactly one applicant, and that applicant wasn't qualified, so we are still trying to fill that position. There are a lot of factors at work there. Various sources indicate that law school admissions currently are down something in the order of 25% to 35% over historical norms. On the other hand, the number of jobs in the legal profession has not dropped since, at least matched that statistical anomaly, so we're in competition with other jobs. And of course, we don't have a law school here. There's a lawyer on every corner in Lubbock, but there's not one here. And so we have to try to draw people to Amarillo. Historically, when we are in our office, we're hiring people from Dallas or Houston typically, and so we have to induce them to come up here. So the thought was that we use some of this money that's sitting, and we're really not doing anything with it, to supplement salaries, to bring our base level pay. Carrie prepared a spreadsheet, and it should be in front of you, to bring our base level pay with one exception, up to 60,000 a year. We think that would hopefully attract good lawyers and retain the ones we have a little longer. Been fairly, we've been more successful in recent years extending out the retention period we have. We've hit an average now of about two years, which is better than we've done in the past. But obviously, the longer we can keep folks in the office, the more we're able to recoup the sun, training costs, as well as the intangible and sort of inscrutable costs of having good lawyers try our cases and handle our cases, hopefully more efficiently and more successful. So my understanding from Carrie, and I certainly stand to be corrected by her, is there's no money in our gambling forfeiture fund to fund this project for four years if we don't do another forfeiture. Now, with that said, we ran two search warrants last week, and I'm sure, I have very little doubt that there are more coming in coming days. So that will not be a purely static number, but the fund is healthy. What I would propose for you, to you, is if the fund goes away, then so does the supplement.
And so you're looking at five positions, making that adjusted to five positions?
Correct. And Wade will be up in front of you in a minute about our domestic violence grant prosecutor. I think we're going to ask for more money on that as well, given, I'll let him talk about the caseload and all that, but we've seen substantial increase in that caseload as well.
So it's not taking it from a base salary 56 to roughly, well, 60,000. Five positions, and you're saying there's enough money in there for four years to cover that?
That's my understanding.
Okay. To cover just that adjustment?
Right.
Are there, sometimes there's restrictions in that, in grants, that they can't be used for adjusting salaries? I don't, I'm assuming.
Well, and I think, I think the idea with Wade is, is we're going to ask for more on the baseline grant, for the domestic violence prosecutor. The rest of these are not grant-funded positions, they're just straight-line criminal prosecutors.
Okay. And then how does this compare with even Randall County? I'm assuming they have.
It's kind of hard. I can tell you that the two we've looked at, that we, we compete with more than Randall County really, are Lubbock and Wichita Falls.
Lubbock has the law school.
Right, and Wichita Falls is closer to Dallas, of course, but we're, we come in under them. 60,000 will still not equate, and it certainly won't put us up around Midland, but Midland has oil money that they're able to draw on. We're not. So it would put us closer to competitive with those. Randall County, quite frankly, the dynamic that's at work in Randall County that we don't have is, there's not a lot of turnover in Randall County because people go to that office and wait around to move up to felony positions. We can't do that. If you're going to go be a felony prosecutor, prosecuting in our office, you have to go somewhere else, you have to go across the street to 47th and A, or you have to go to Randall County. I will say, fortunately, in recent years, our local offices have made more significant use of our resources. That is, they've essentially drafted our lawyers to go work as felony prosecutors more than we've seen in the past. And we've always believed we were the farm team for the felony big league teams. Although we still lose people to Dallas, we still lose people to Houston, but, but we're trying, and part of our hiring strategy is to try and get more publicity out to local applicants, people with ties to this community, you know, people who are, who have family here, who want to stay in Amarillo. And if we can make it, if we can make it a little more attractive on that end, you know, again, it's, it's no big secret that you're not going to be making as much money in a misdemeanor prosecutor as you are if you go to work at a firm. But on the other hand, you're going to get in court, and you're going to do real lawyer work a lot faster than firm lawyers.
How would we, in terms of our benefits to those counties that decided to work in law, and why would that be?
Retirement is very similar around the, most people.
Yeah, I can only tell you, anecdotally talking to my colleagues, I think Wichita Falls is roughly commensurate with our, for instance, our health benefits. Lubbock, I don't think is quite as attractive in that end, but I think that hey, more, and there's the opportunity, like in Randall County, to move directly into a felony court if you stay there.
Do they have a career progression line?
Yeah, because they're a criminal district attorney's office.
This has been going on for quite some time. I mean, we've had, we act as a study stone.
Sure.
For all law schools that come and, that come to work here, and they go across the street or to Randall County.
Right. At least we're trying to pick out people who want to be prosecutors, so at least we're not just training lawyers.
Is there any particular reason why that one is not getting the raise everyone else?
That's, I'm looking at holding that as an entry level position, and then once there's turnover, we move that, whoever's holding that position, into one of the higher paid positions.
We've lost some good lawyers.
We've lost a lot of good lawyers.
Okay, I hope this will help.
I hope so.
I would just want to say that I support that your effort here, and wish we could do more, because we look at what we're paying our court appointed attorneys, what that scale is based on, it's not anywhere near this.
Right.
We want to compete, right, for the defense, we need to have prosecutors.
Right.
So I move that we approve the proposed salary adjustments in the county attorney's office for the transfer of funds from the gambling forfeiture to supplement those criminal charges.
I'm sorry. Can you make this second? I have a motion in a second. I'll make a reservation.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Scott. Okay, number nine, this position, a forfeit asset, to consider for approval, or sheriff to take possession of a 2,000, I was going to say 2,000 euro, 2,000 year model Toyota pickup truck obtained through that. Sheriff, that was your cue.
We have one that we, that was damaged, an accident, lost it, and in the process, we also took on our other legal services, not ready yet, so it's really, it's, you know, not, and everyone, in place.
And the quality of the vehicle, you may have said that, I'm sorry, skip that on permission, but you feel good about this vehicle we're taking on?
What's better than one?
I'm sure there's every other, I assume so, but I'd like to verify.
Prove to approve the request, sheriff to take the best of the one, 2,000 year model Toyota pickup truck obtained through an asset forfeiture of 16.
I have a motion in a second. I'll make a reservation. Four, zero. Number 10, resolution for grant applications to consider for approval, a resolution including submission of a grant application for participation in the Valdez Women Act Justice Training Program during this year, 2018, 2019, waiver of 20.
Good morning. Good morning, Judge. I'm Mr. Shane Bisham. So first of all, thank you all for supporting this out on my, for giving us the opportunity to apply for a grant. The, that line for the grant, we're going to apply again, it's coming up on February 20th. If you will give us your approval, we will pull back that application again. One of the things that Scott, attorney, when it was up here a few minutes ago, is, I do want to ask for more money for this position this year, and I don't know if Carrie may recall this, last year, whenever we were initially considering doing this, I was kind of having an internal debate with myself about what level of funding, the morning's request for this position. I didn't, it would suggest to me last year to request a higher initial amount, but I was kind of going to do that because I did want to create divisions within our criminal division, right? I didn't want to have peers under effectively doing the same type of work, having one where they pay, particularly for the war, then the other with the same type of work. So I ended up requesting a mountain, 55,000, all in on bar with our other positions. But, but a few things have changed, and I guess my, my thinking maybe should come in issue a little bit. Some of the things have changed. One, you know, Scott's, you know, made this decision trying to use the gambling funds to love, to the prosecutors of, and I really, I, I thank y'all for proving that. I think that's very important. It's been something I've been lobbying Scott for, for a couple of years, because I've seen this. I, last year, for a good time, I, I talked to the South Falls, I talked to Midland, the South Falls, we tried the 60,000, people there, he's the level of prosecutor. And Scott says, you know, Midland forces kind of at skew because they have oil money, but they're, they're around 72,000 for misdemeanor prosecutors. And for the very points that Scott managed to track and hopefully retain to a longer period of time as a prosecutor. With regard to this position, another factor that's changed is, Laura Gunn at PRBC suggested to me, she said you should ask for more money for it, although the amount that's been authorized and out together in the office for this particular project wouldn't seem to be enough on its face to cover our local applicants, which would be our office, 47th and A's in the Randall County, the attorney's office. What she saw last year, what's the anticipation of that this year, is because a prosecutor would initiate it under law grants that mentioned by the government's office, or under some stride, there should be more money there, so if we have to, we should get it. We're going to ask for 65,000 for this position for this year. Carrie divided our office with numbers, I think with that, the difference on the match is going to be about 750 dollars, I believe, basically. I think the plan is to, for the county to make that up in terms of the travel and education for this position. The incumbent that we have in the position right now, since our attorney at home is serving a prosecutor, a non-prosecutor, almost two years of service, and sadly, I anticipate we will lose him by the summer, nothing to do with the office, but he's getting married, he's from the Dallas area, he wants to, he wants to move back to that area. So the, my idea of it is to promote into this position from within our. So my idea of it is to promote into this position from within our ranks people who already have experience prosecuting in our two courts of law. And again, hopefully this will set about somebody to come to it. Now, another significant change in certain chances is this. When we were here last year asking y'all about this, the total number of domestic violence cases that were presented to our office in two thousand sixteen was one hundred ninety five. In two thousand seventeen, we had four hundred and sixty six presented. It's almost one hundred, almost one hundred forty percent increase. This is what's driving the change. And this is kind of a mixed blessing. We're, both our office and the broader coordinated community response to domestic violence is fortunate, I think, to have a new chief police onboard, Chief Ryan, who's committed to this effort. And he's helped us achieve some things that honestly we probably couldn't accomplish without any term of power, kind of collecting evidence and new legality assessments in these cases. But at the same time, when he looked at his own department, I think he arrived at the conclusion that many cases that were being presented as class Cs in this court probably would have been professional for class A misdemeanors, available to be jailed on. It's a total of about twelve hundred cases in two thousand seventeen. So what that means is the Amarillo Police Department has diverted a lot more cases to our office to be presented as class A misdemeanors as opposed to Cs, which is accounted for that increase. And one thing I would like to bear in mind about the increase in that volume of cases today, that was really based on eight months of two thousand sixteen. We're probably going to look at six hundred assault domestic violence cases presented to our office this year. So we need some, there's kind of hazard pay or misery pay, if you will. There's a ton of work there. We're probably going to do some things in terms of trying to help prosecute that position, try to win out some cases that maybe shouldn't be there. And other of our prosecutors have been trying to help with intake on these cases rather than with backlog because sadly, with the increase in volume, our backlog on these cases is significantly increased. And my concern with that is this, the idea with this grant is to try to get closer and quicker engaged with victims of these cases. One of the difficult things about prosecuting these cases is oftentimes, far more often victims choose not to cooperate with prosecution. The wife working in Randall County, if they're ready to get prosecuted, she's trying to get her to contact and to explain to the victim that it's not all about getting the conviction, but if you will simply show up and tell the truth, if we need to, we might be able to move the offender into something like BIP, which is, which can be useful to produce incidents of domestic violence. So anyway, we're asking to reauthorize this grant. We think it's effective. We think we're really getting started. We didn't move the prosecutor into it until November last year, although we authorized it in the beginning also. And with the increase in numbers, it's kind of allowed me to change the experience so we can't really say how it affects this man. I think it's going to be a long term effort. But Scott, with the reauthorization, we will remain committed to the effort and will continue to live by.
Well, you have two questions to find me. So you mentioned this drastic jump in one calendar year, which obviously is alarming to hear these numbers. And unfortunately, we hear a lot of these similar threats depending on what we're talking about here on the court. But you mentioned two things, changing the type of classification, I guess, of the crime, and then really trying to get to a victim earlier before the court proceedings. Is there anything outside of that that's being done in a preventative way? Because I think how this original grant was established, but keep me honest here, Carrie, is there's a preventative type of measures in there so that we're not just on the far end, whether that's jail time, prosecution, whatever that looks like as opposed to the offense? Because that is such a drastic shift in one year.
So related to this effort, but outside of the grant. Within the grant, I'm just a prosecutor officer. I mean, really, we can only begin to engage with these cases once they've been presented with law, which, but there's a domestic violence coalition that our office has been part of. The ever has been around for a long time, and new instance was placed on it about three years ago. And this domain has changed, the DDC, now Domestic Violence Coalition. For a long time, we had the Domestic Violence Protocol. All this is about coordinated community response. And so the protocol historically was out there and it tried to have law enforcement and prosecutors and family support services, victim services all on the same page. So it's been there, we've rebuilt it ever. So part of what is happening outside of prosecution with defendants, part of it, for instance, is the legality assessment. Part of the paperwork that is, the coalition asked the law enforcement agencies, including Sheriff's Commissaries, and they were an early adopter of it. It's a package, it's a pack of information that patrolmen use. And it started out under eleven pages and then it's actually six pages. Much of that document is about evidence collection. You know, what did the victim look like, what was her demeanor, if he was still there, if assailant, what was his demeanor like, were they upset? What did people say happened at the time? But another part of this, and it's, I believe it's on the first page, it's something called the legality assessment. It's based on a model out of Amarillo, it's Amarillo legality assessment. It's eleven questions. And what it does is it helps the peace officer on the scene, if they can get the victim to engage and answer these questions, this is evidence base. It has been proven to, if the victim will take the opportunity to move them out of what could potentially be a lethally violent situation. When the officer on the scene engages in that question or will participate, if they score in time, uh, balance, or the protocol is that they will connect them with family support services, their crisis shelter, they will look, and will move yourself in that situation, the victim, and then the shelter. And though Jim Womack, family support service, over the past years, we've started using this form, I repeatedly learn to say that their sense of the shelters has gone up. So that's part of the effort that comes with federal prosecution, trying to move the victim out of that circumstance. And a lot of times, they may ultimately go back, but at least when they get to the shelter and they can talk to, you know, in crisis, emergency specials, they can help them try to understand, you know, the potential seriousness of the circumstances that they're dealing with. So that kind of exists in tandem with, but outside of the prosecution effort.
Thank you. I make a motion that we approve a resolution for submission of a grant application for participation in the Violence Against Women Act Justice Training Program, fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
I have a motion on the second on the favor of the attorney. Four zero.
Thank you, thank you.
Number eleven, traffic control at Bushland Middle School to consider for approval of proposal to allow installation of no parking signs along portions of twenty fourth street in Bushland to bring back flow to our front Bushland school. Good morning.
Good morning, Harry, guys. I read you guys, I'm also a school resource officer, I'm a superintendent for Sweden. I also have some apps, I don't know if you guys have, I'll pass that to you real quick. Certainly the area, what we're, they're on twenty fourth street, on the north side of our soccer field. What's happening is some of our parents are parking along that area in the afternoon with their students, and some of them are also parking on the private area, the residential. And so it's really bottlenecked issues for ours to get out. Chris and I have visited extensively about some new plans and what we wanted to do to control the traffic around there. As obviously, you know, we're pretty easy plan lock out there, as we guess we are. But we've got some ideas for what we put in place for pickup and things like that in the future. But where we're having a big problem is right down on twenty fourth, that traffic we follow. That's something that we'd like to fix right now and help us with our future plans on controlling that traffic. And just be on the north side of that soccer field, not all the way down.
So where will this, where will they go? If you put on park, where will the parents go?
We're hoping that they'll actually fall into traffic along Wells. We, the way we've actually set it, we've got it marked and everything where they can park in certain areas, along Wells Street, or over in the middle school on the south end. That whole parking lot is still open right now. So we're hoping that will help push them over to where we actually had designated for them. Our future, our future plans are to actually bring in to that north parking lot on the north side of the elementary and actually bring them in, kind of loop them in and then exit out east on the twenty fourth. It would be a lot easier flow once they leave, but we're going to have to open that properly up.
Then you're asking, is the twenty fourth, twenty fourth street is a county road as opposed to the school district road?
Correct, yes, sir.
And then Judge, I'm assuming the signage, if approved, would come through Road and Bridge, which is fairly minimal cost, right? Or installing, I'm assuming some?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
What'd you say? Is that?
Yes.
It's going to be a problem out there, continued following, the continued growth, which is a good thing.
It is a good thing, yes, sir.
What are your plans for the middle school? Are you going to do that for elementary school?
We actually have parking at the middle school.
No, you're saying that in the future you're going to have them in that dark parking lot and they go out twenty fourth?
Yes, sir.
That would just serve the elementary school.
Yes, sir.
How would you, how would you plan to work with that?
We won't, we don't have the bottleneck down here on the south end of the elementary. What they're going to do is just release the students, kindergarten, first grade, and that kind of thing on the north end. So then those parents would just be able, that they don't have to go to the south end. Does that make sense? Right now, they're having to do both.
Yeah, yeah, they all come to both, too.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we approve installation of no parking signs along portions of twenty fourth street in Bushland to improve traffic flow to and from middle school. Signs and installation of income for county Road and Bridge. And just before I finish that motion, how many signs are we living at?
Three.
Three signs. I'll include that in my motion.
I have a motion on the second on the favor of the attorney. Four zero. Thank you, gentlemen.
Yes, appreciate it.
Sheriff, why don't you just stay right where you are, sir? Number twelve, Texas Commission on Jail Standards to Recognize the Excellent Work of the Park County Sheriff's Office in the Specific of Compliance for the Park County Jail. Excellent, excellent work because I was in that meeting and I was very happy to hear what was.
It's probably one of the quickest tours that we've had. We started something, certainly, you know, where all the stuff that he looks at, we put on a thumb drop anyway, so as soon as he walks on, we see the thumb drops, he doesn't have to go pull actual folders and tie them down. It knocks down a lot of his time, a lot of his effort to find something, to wait on something. He did a walkthrough through the dialysis. One of the things he does, he actually sets off a fire on the smoke detector to see how fast the guys respond. We have the guys there in thirty eight seconds. They have to go and get all their gear on and then come running around their corner and off and then walk out. Very impressive watching them ask you their next question. We have three table of entries, which means this means we had an issue with their fixed homicide, so it was fixed on one of them, it was just a airflow in the court home. It was just a glitch when they had done some work on that. That was fixed that and I can go back out the next day and do it. What are we going to see this?
Were there any comments, Sheriff, about the new building going up?
No, it's not a issue.
Good one. I would be surprised if there was still needs to comment of that major footprint of the jail.
I mean, they didn't even go.
Yeah. Well, I'll have money for that time.
You have, you have an excellent staff. Kudos to Kat Dawson for the work she does out there, so.
Thank you, sir.
Good job. Number thirteen, racial profiling report to review the tier one partial exemption racial profiling report for classes two and three. Y'all want to speak on that or just one of the ones to? So recognized. Fourteen, resolution, special prosecutor, domestic violence, to consider an effect on authorization, Judge Tanner, execute application for federal assistance to be submitted to the office of returned general criminal justice system for the continuation of the Violence Against Women's Act grant for the year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Randall.
Yes, ma'am.
This is you, right?
Yes, ma'am. Next to you, boss.
Hey.
This is our attorney, Alton Stroud, that we got hired. He's very fortunate. He has done that for several years in the Metroplex, so he hit the ground running and has done very well. As a lot of the criminal stats, those Amarillo, you know, we kind of topped the mark for Amarillo. The twenty sixteen stats for the middle violence cases that were presented to office is twenty four hundred, twenty seven. Seventeen, twenty seven, eighty eight. And if the trend continues in twenty eighteen, as we've seen this last six weeks, we'll reach nearly thirty five hundred cases in twenty eighteen.
Randall, what do you think, what do you think the problem is? What do you see?
I think more cases are getting reported. I think there is a better effort on all the law enforcement to do something about this because the domestic violence coalition stuff that we've all put together. We're also receiving these cases that in the past we would not perceive because the sergeants would have been also going to make that case. So, and that is a significant problem for our office. And that's Amarillo, those numbers were the Amarillo Police Department and Park County as well. That's not going to consider something that we did as an original matter, meaning we did file a complaint initially. We'll consider those numbers, which probably is minimal anyway. But we're getting a lot of cases. And I continue, Alton's been a great job over there. For this grant, we used the other lawyers, or a couple of, not just the other lawyers, we used the other employees to lead the match for the program because we, we knew going in, Alton can't handle every one of those cases. Even if he can handle every one of the intake switching, we'll not be able to do a lot of these style of numbers. When it goes to a court, there's five district courts, the first week, we have three of them, they go to trial, is their trial week. We can't be in three places at once. So we, instead of using a lot of cash, we're using employees, hours, working on those, meaning the secretary, the investigators, and the attorney, the trial team of each one of those that will then help offset, help offset the cash match. The grant totals, the grant totals, projects, a hundred and fifty thousand, lower a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we're cash matching forty five and a hundred others coming from the grant, a hundred and forty plus coming from the grant. We're real excited about what all's happening, especially with the domestic violence coalition. As y'all are aware, there was Texas Council Family Violence, like for entities across the state of Texas to be involved in a grant, to develop some kind of program to handle domestic violence. We are miles ahead of the other three. We've got written protocols, in fact, we're miles ahead of some of the other people that have been operating for ten years, like y'all passed up, they don't have any written protocols. And we're working, our executive committees meeting and screening cases for the, what we call the high risk. And when we do that, typically, we probably try to do six, eight, somewhere along that at a time, and my office is going to have two thirds of us. So that's kind of what the numbers look like, but everything's going well good, everything's great with the domestic violence protocol, with the council, and all the support stuff is going very well. I mean, we just, we got, we had David Scott, that's in charge of that grant funding, came out a month ago, and visited with us in December, and he was very surprised and pleased. And he was very surprised and pleased with how far we've gone, and all that kind of stuff. And he's very happy with all our progress. So, and we'll get him back for a training here sometime in the future, in the spring, some, maybe probably two, and some things. And he'll come back and do some training on for all law enforcement. That's about it for Alton. Unless I've got some questions?
I do have one question, but I, I think this is probably more interpretation on my end. I, often when we talk about these grants, I get very confused on the, the Bawa grant and the Foca grant. So I want to make sure that you're in there right after each other in the agenda.
The Bawa is for lawyer, domestic violence. Foca is for, that we're fixing to talk about, is for our three crime victim coordinators. That would be Jan, Robin, and Suzie. Now, we also have another grant for Fordham, that we treated the same way we treated Suzie for. That's not a surprise.
Okay, so item four team that we're currently on, um, to?
That is our domestic violence lawyer group that's in our office.
And that is this, this cash, this cash match of forty five thousand? We have several for with the backup, so I'm making sure I'm following you.
Forty five and one, basically nearly one oh five.
So this is a lawyer for the prosecutor of domestic violence, so this lawyer is, um, I have personnel at a hundred and forty thousand, we match at forty five thousand, so a total of a hundred and fifty thousand?
Correct.
And is that all salary, or fringe benefits wrapped into that?
All the training, all that stuff is coming out of my, coming out of my budget.
Okay. So what is this one fifty cover for this lawyer? How much of that is salary, I guess is my question?
Nearly all of it.
The one oh four is the actual term of salary in place.
Yes, two years.
One year.
Well, winner, it's one year.
And then the one oh five is the percentage of all the other staff and attorneys that are holding the payments.
That's the support staff that you're accounting as the cash match. So we pay this attorney for the prosecutor of domestic violence, including benefits, roughly a hundred and forty thousand? Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
The whole pack, the whole package for him on salaries is one oh four.
Okay, and how does that compare with how we pay our other attorneys? Is that higher, lower, in the middle?
That's, with the number of people I've got that are long in the tooth, that's, that's gonna be totally lower than, 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 than higher. Except for, he's really not, and under higher. I mean, he, he is well knowledgeable in domestic violence.
Carrie, any concerns on the budget, and these grants, to me, when these three come in, or these two come in at the same time, are always a little over. So I want to make sure.
I believe we approve the authorization executed application for federal assistance to the office of attorney general for the continuation of the V A, W A grant for the years twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
Second. A motion, second on favor ratio right here. Four zero.
I guess your question has nothing to do with this money car. How many of these cases, because it's the city that does the police work that brings folks in? They're booked in at the city jail, or the city police department. Do those count on Potter Counties, even though they're arrested in Randall County? The second county is against Potter Counties?
No, this, this is just, the numbers for our office, it's just Potter County numbers. Just our numbers, not Scott's, not anybody else.
No, what I'm, what I'm concerned about.
If Randall County gets arrested, if they get arrested in Randall County, they go to Randall County.
Automatically?
Yes.
And just because they're, that some people are arrested in Randall County, ride into Amarillo, who's booked, do the paperwork. Now, where did they go back in Randall County?
Typically, you're going one of the county jail, or the, at the end of the day, they're one of the, in the jail of the county that has the charge.
Where, probably most of them.
But it's not, I don't, I don't know how common it is, but for example, I know of an incident where we picked somebody up in Randall County, and they were gonna try to work to just bring him out of County. And that didn't work out, so they had to put him in Randall County first, and then they had to transfer him. And I'm sure probably the opposite, the same thing happens going the other way sometimes. And so, but, most of the time, we get arrested, most of the people get arrested in the county where they're at, and go to that jail.
Alright, number fifteen, resolution, victims assistance program to consider an act upon authorization of someone to execute application for federal assistance to be submitted to the office of attorney general criminal justice system for the continuation of the Foca grant for the years twenty eighteen through twenty twenty.
And this is a two-year grant. And it's for a total of four hundred thirty one thousand, three hundred and fifty three dollars. Go from ten, one, eighteen, to nine, thirty, twenty. And that is for the three crime victim coordinators that was in earlier, Jan and Robin, that are in the office. Suzie, that is with the Amarillo Police Department. And then, and then we have a fourth one that's not involved, most granted, so they're also executing a grant for her. We resigned from that position like last Tuesday, something like that. Up and quit personal prisons. And all of us were very surprised, and all that Veronica Pita from, as far as origins. All that the lieutenant that was over that, that was two of the reasons was the same thing. She just says, personal business, I'm sorry, and then she wrote a very nice resignation letter, and apologizing about it. And I do believe we've got somebody, I called the lieutenant ponder last Friday, and indicated to him, I thought there was probably somebody that has done that type of job before, that is interested in, we're gonna begin. And he was at lunch with his wife, and I can get a call back.
I would imagine it would be very difficult, though. Because, is, is Jan here, Jan, you know that, you know how long it is to deal?
Jan found out the heart blade this last week, this last week, with the twelve.
So you see the worst of the worst, you just didn't sense, so I understand that maybe she just couldn't handle that.
Well, I actually.
We all saw the person, which clearly is something that I, I'm, 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 I'm.
Okay, okay. So the cash match on this of fifteen thousand, two forty three, is that, um, salary is offsetting that, or what are we counting? I guess, if that are, if we're counting as our cash match on?
A few questions, but the last time I remember having something that bad, was when someone was out on the mall, was dropping a long way, and he turned to go, hit on a van, it was absolutely packed, like fifteen people. The last time I remember having something that's old, I had a good one.
Move here, authorize the Judge Tanner, authorize Judge Tanner to execute application for federal assistance. To be, to be submitted to the office of attorney general criminal justice for the continuation of the F O C A grant for the years twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
I have a motion, and a second on favor ratio right here. Four zero, thanks, Randy.
Thank you very much. We've really been, all those folks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna get confused, that's literally now in thousands of minutes.
Okay, number sixteen, Potter County Drug Court, resolution to consider an act upon authorization of the office of general on the same first of June. Drug court, four years, twenty nineteen, county area.
Good morning, Judge.
Carrie.
Yes, this is our annual request for authorization of a grant that we receive through the criminal justice division of the governor's. The grant's about a hundred and five thousand dollars, a hundred and seven, eight comes down every year, so sometimes it's, it's hard to keep track, if it wasn't one time, well over a hundred and thirty thousand. What we do with that money is run our drug court program, provide a probation officer and counseling services for offenders. This last year, I believe we had, what do we have in there? We had thirty one participants, thirty one new cases in, graduated ten, had a success rate of ninety one percent. There was only one that was unsuccessfully discharged, the others either are still in the program or are, or referred for further counseling kind of services. So, we feel like we have a good program, Judge Board does an excellent job relating to offenders, which is key to a drug court program, and we would just request curfew court support and approval for that, for that grant.
I want, I want to know who, who did this, the, the spell, county court. So we'll make that one done.
Okay, I'll applaud, I'll applaud you.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve the resolution authorizing the application for the grant for the one hundred eighty first district drug court for the year twenty nineteen.
Certainly. I have a motion, and a second on favor ratio, four zero, thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Number seventeen, continuing education to regulate laws, Caroline Woodhams, completion requirement, continuing education average to twenty seventeen as described in section fifty one point zero, six oh five of the Texas government code. So, thank you, Caroline. Number eighteen, Potter County strategic plan to consider an act upon, number two, strategic plan team preparation for the next steps of Potter County strategic plan.
Alright, we've got PRPC with us, we've got Dustin, and this is our continuation of the strategic plan. This is what I would call maybe pretty close to our final phase. This was a one-year contract that we have the PRPC to initiate this kind of multi, multi-year planning. So all that, Dustin, kind of speaks to next steps, but we did have an agenda item, I would say, early January, where we, the ask of PRPC was, now we have vetted through all of the departments, and this court needs to establish the true strategic planning team that will take this into the final phase. And so I think that's for consideration and hopefully action today.
Thank you, good morning, Judge, and good morning, Commissioner. Appreciate you guys letting me speak here today. And Commissioner is exactly right, we have had, I think, six working group meetings. Those working group meetings, really all they did was they helped us identify the issues, establish some common backgrounds, some common themes. I think we had eight broad areas that we covered, and within those eight broad areas, we went into over fifty different topics. So we kind of went into, just to find those common definitions and sort out some of the issues. So really, the heavy lifting is still to come. That's gonna be the strategic planning team, that you guys have that slated nomination, nominees in front of you. What we anticipate is that team will come together twice for some strategic planning sessions. Those sessions can be kind of lengthy, we will get out some dates, so we can get, hopefully, everybody to participate in that. Twice start about nine o'clock, run, you know, as long as we need to go, up until five o'clock, PRPC will provide lunch for you guys. But that's really where we're gonna get into the heavy lifting. Through that working group, we put together the preparation document, and this kind of summarizes all of the discussions we had in those six meetings with the working group. I will get this preparation document out to each one of these nominees this afternoon, so that they can start reviewing it, going through it, and familiarizing themselves with each one of the topics that we discussed. The big piece in, in the preparation document is there's a score sheet in here, and the score sheet has all of the eight, eight, eight areas that we discussed, along with the fifty identified topics. So with that score sheet, what we'd like for everybody to do is to identify, you know, five of their, number one, this is number one topic that we need to go over in the strategic planning session. And they'll have five number twos that they're gonna give out, okay? This is the second most important, they can issue five number twos. And we're gonna rank one through five, each one of these topic areas. So we're gonna ask that those get returned about a day ahead of time, so that we can kind of be present and, you know, prioritize and calculate all of everybody's responses, and then we can spend our time on the most important topics for you guys. We anticipate the strategic plan, out of these fifty areas, that the strategic plan will probably cover thirteen, fifteen, these fifty topics here. Those are kind of the steps that you, which you guys might have.
The only thing I might add to that is I did meet with Judge Tanner, that's where this list came from, so that we were kind of starting from scratch here, working for. The other thing I'll call out is that every member of the board is a part of this, so we'll have some open meeting requirements to make sure that we, we stop, which is fine, you know, to be a part of this process. I think that really enhances the work that we're trying to do. We'll probably, as we work on the agenda to post it, we might just have a public comment section at the end, so that those that are visiting, if they want to give input, we do kind of have a pause at some point, that they can give input through that process. There are some, the key is gonna be the calendar, like, that's the truth with a group this size. And the amount of time we can't finish this, the good news is it's only two sessions. So I'm kind of estimating maybe something in February and something in March, just to get the two done. But for the members that don't have this backup, Judge, do you want to read that off separate one, or would you like me to? Okay. So the proposed strategic planning team, I have Judge Tanner, Commissioner Kelly, Commissioner Merkia, Commissioner Church, Commissioner Vaughn, Judge Board, Judge Plan, District Attorney's Office, Randall Sims, County Attorney's Office, Scott Bromley, Sheriff, Brian Thomas, County Clerk, Julie Smith, Fire and Rescue Chief, Lake, Robert, Road and Bridge, Sebastian, see, I have to say that wrong, I said. Auditor, Carrie Hood, and facilities, Mike, Mike Head. So that's who we have slated as a part of this team. Now certainly, department heads and elected officials, you guys feel free to send and designate as we work through this. Is there anyone we're missing? Our ask was to stay somewhere ten to fifteen, to get this kind of a good comprehensive group of lean enough so we could schedule, so we landed on fifteen.
Is there anyone in the office, faith, who we office?
Yes. Sounds like I'm not gonna do things exactly.
I want to make sure that no one feels that they're being left out. And we are at Pittsburgh, uh, I want to make sure we're not covering too tight, packing in Pittsburgh. But inside, establish a timeline of this, as far as setting this to full board, or not. I want to make sure that we're not rushing it, as far as the trigger date, maybe in March, and then.
Yeah, I think the, you know, the big thing as far as that timeline goes is so that the full strategic planning team has a chance to review that preparation document. We just need a couple days, preferably not back to back, you know, we want a couple days, so that everybody's brains not, not motion between them. But yeah, if, you know, I think a late February date would be, be appropriate, and then maybe one in March to do those strategic planning sessions, and then it, then it's really me and Kyle, and, you know, our staff going back in the cave, and, and hatching it all out, and, you know, making sense out of it.
But I want to thank you first of all, you want to see a less, a less, a leadership, and then, and loud language, for outstanding job. I want to make sure we're not pushing you.
No, sir. No, sir, I, I think those dates, the February and, and early March.
We're hoping to get a late February.
Yeah, they're late, they're late, they're in the month. The only other addition that I might add is I'm reading off this list, and I just chatted here with Judge Tanner, I team, Brandon. Sorry, I need you on that list, yeah.
I think I'm coming down with something.
He didn't raise his hand, so, but, okay. So, if there's not any questions, let me follow up with the motion to, to formalize the Potter County strategic planning team as presented to the court, to work in coalition with P O P C, and complete the Potter County strategic plan.
When what, when class, when I'm going, going.
I need a second, please.
Sir.
Alright. Motion, and a second on favor ratio, okay? Four zero.
I really appreciate you guys, and, uh, I'll probably be getting the big email out to, to the board and nominee. Um, I'll probably get a few for some emails, but, uh, get an email and that preparation document and worksheets and stuff.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes.
Number nineteen, Salary Grievance Committee to Consider, now drawing of nine members and nine alternates for the Salary Grievance Committee for twenty eighteen, you might get nine votes from us.
This is still funny that we drop in the box. So my three are Mark Bodman, and I'll leave these for a spell in my case to read them. Um, Marie Yvette Ochoan, Bonnie Org, Kayla Nerjeff, Lee Riles Junior, Stan Chapman, Chat, C-H-A-T, Crystal Foster.
Stan Chapman.
Chat.
Brendan Walker, Jerry Arthur, I'm going to kill this. Alani Vaughn, Patel.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
And the winners are, the rest are Bora, M.B.A.R.A., Lauren, Lauren Cerro Man Dora.
I'm not going to bow down.
And, and, hey, Rodney Garner. Ailey Higgins. This one woman, Commissioner Vaughn happy, Linda Vaughn. Juliana Johnson.
Jessica Martinez, Brian Johnson, and Lisa Freitas.
No, I was just looking at that line, see? You're doing it, but it, thanks. I make a motion that we approve the nine members and nine alternates for the Salary Grievance Committee for twenty eighteen, um, as drawn.
Sir.
I have a motion in second on February. Four zero, thank you very much. Thanks, Stephen. Number twenty, parking garage access policy to consider for the proposed policy for employee access to parking garage. This just continues on and on, and, uh, Dan, I'm going to let you explain what we've come up with. Our view.
This is my attempt to put down a plan for what I think we talked about.
Okay.
Otherwise it's.
I know, and I think specifically, as, uh, Commissioner Kelly asked for some, kind of updating this, but he, I believe so. Um, I, I like, you actually go out and you count the cars. I know. It's a way down, you start counting. It's very intuitive. And it's very, and it's very sad, that it's a whole solid, all the people that are parking there. Um, okay, so what, well, just go through this real fast and just kind of go through.
Well, I don't really want this to be true, you know, the policy, like, I would say this is hard, I should put it back, uh, more, discussing. I suppose this amounts to, um, this policy proposal comes to intend to encourage the employees to use the garage while they have a chance to use it, free access. I'd hate to see our employees lose that chance.
Because that time is coming.
Otherwise it's seven dollars a day.
Yeah. And I'm going to start cleaning up later, parking around all the buildings, city buildings.
And with the cost account, I'm just trying to get it a little bit. Now saturated, those service lots become, as you can see on the pictures, over the days, were filled. Those lots became saturated with cars spilling out into the street, started parking. And those become bigger, and that's going to present a real problem. If we had citizens showing up for jury duty, having to, having to park for the streets. I don't think the district judges will write that. I don't think citizens will write that. So this policy is intended to encourage the employees to use the garage, which in my opinion is an upgrade for the service policy.
So two questions, and if I may, um, so I'm remembering an agenda item in December timeline, maybe November, when we had elected officials saying, there's nothing in the policy, so put something in the policy. And there's nothing to make an employee, you know, if you go, uh, put something in the manual, and then I would follow it. Um, so in terms of getting that administrative work done, is this the draft of what will go into the official manual? Or is it just a policy floating out there that it depends who you are and who the going exists out there? I mean, I, I don't, I hope Randall's still with us, but I know he specifically called out, there's nothing in the manual that tells me I need to do this.
Is there a, is there something to put to living, but I think with court, you, I don't know, I'll just give myself, is that me would just carry any of my thoughts.
Kind of think, I think the court has already done that.
I mean, it's due more than just, uh, saying we, uh, strongly so. And if there's any policy that would, uh, struggle, stating such, that if we did, that would be, uh, uh, and I know that's probably probably a little bit more, uh, on its own insurance problem, but, uh,
Well, and, and even the language, I mean, right, right, currently the language is county employees that make who choose to park in the garage must park in those designated areas. So, I mean, that's very different than the commissioners for the Potter County, the administrative body, has set a standard for parking. And if every elected official does not follow that, then they're accountable to the media and the constituents just like we are. I mean, I personally get phone calls from the media saying, how, how many people are parking, and, and what does that look like? You need to call that other elected official, because they're just as accountable. We can establish a policy. But right now, what I'm hearing in terms of temperament is, well, there's no policy. So write a policy, and say, this is the standard. And then once the standard's there, I think everybody's accountable for answering to their constituents.
Well, we will be glad to help put in on the paper where the policy.
Was that our direction? I, I feel like that was.
Well, I think it was, I think we had some difficulty with the angels. Can we, by the way, say, is there, is there, is there, uh, assuming that it's, uh, not, uh,
Well, we can have a policy that says parking garage, or else. The question is, or else what?
Well, I don't even know that we need to go to the or else yet. I think we need to have a policy saying what our recommended parking should be, based on what we know now. Now, if there's what else, and we're getting hung up on the what else, you know, may, maybe there's some language that we, you know, follow appropriate employee protocol as deemed by your elected official or department head, and those department heads report to the court. The other elected officials can pick up the phone from channel seven, channel ten, channel four, and say, tell me why your employees are not parking there. This was a one million dollar initiative for twenty years, which saved us a fifteen million dollar parking garage. And I think it's, I don't think it's fair to say, Cor, but I do feel like, as a general rule, the, the county feel, they're used to things dropping off the radar, right? It's like, it'll get off the agenda, it'll turn, it'll, they'll forget about it soon, no one's saying anything. This is very visible, and we are actively not forward with the policy.
Does that, the language goes for twice on times, to me, that, uh, that we, we will be obviously prepared, you know? If, if somebody, like, I don't know if you have any thoughts that you want to expound first of all?
I have several thoughts, but, um, I'm not unspeakeable. Um, I, I'm, I'm at the point now, Pat, where I'm ready to go back and say, if you decided since the upcoming facility of the state is going to be built, for them to have all this parking, any parking, if they want their permit back, we can give it back to them. I would be willing to do that, if they're, if they're not, then they're on their own.
That, that's the point, that's the point I was trying to make to this policy.
Okay, okay.
We, you all can say a thousand times parking garage, but it's not pointed out in an earlier meeting. The enforcement mechanism for you all is control access to county park, that we've discussed, it would have, with gates and attendance and so forth, toy trucks, parking signs, that's expensive stuff. So, and so I thought that was more or less off the table. So now we're talking about pointing our fingers, saying, park the garage, we've got elected officials who, if, if they're not going to instruct their employees to play county policy, they're elected officials.
That's right, and then they're reporting, then they stand to their constituents and answer the phone calls, just like any of us. So I think the lack of a policy is where we are, and if our directive is, here is your parking, please use it.
I think that's right, I think that's, uh, and, and, and do it even still further, say too, not to park in the parking lot, that's fine, that's all that's correct. You do not park on the, the lot, or do, do. Well, how do you, how do you, that's all, you know, how do you, unless you, like you say, you have limited access, who can get in?
See, maybe that's not.
I think we put the homeless on, on, to like.
Yes, that's not our problem to solve. Yes, the, the, every elected official is just as responsible as any other member of this court. And maybe we're trying to solve for the abortion case, and our body, our governing, um, purview is on the policy. And there's no policy today. So if I, if I were Randall, he very well could still stand up here and say, there's no policy through the enforcement, and I'd say, you're right.
I think so. Awesome, you can do that, I think, park in the garage.
That's the policy.
That's the policy.
We have, we have a whole manual for policies that people choose not to follow. I mean, I, I'm just saying that we have, we have a dress code, we have all kinds of stuff, people have to do on.
Well, by my understanding, we have about eight to ten people who are days when we have a big hearing. When the service lots are saturated, we have eight or ten people that will volunteer to park. That's all, that's all. That's the only difference I find in my, um, official body. The rest, not worried. And we'll be worried about it when meters go on the streets, and citizens showing up for jury duty, have to pay the part, because our employees won't go to park. That's when the media, that's when the, my.
Okay, that's it.
If the media, if the media get it out, after that, they won't go, but comes a, that's the one that I, basically.
And I'll provide a list of everyone who's choosing not to park there and say, here are your contacts, please call them. And I'll be happy to do a side-by-side interview. I mean, at this point, this is a million dollar taxpayer money that we cannot answer for. So that's on our turf, you know, okay?
I probably. Is this a, a, a?
Yes, it is. The contract? Yeah, oh, yeah, in a local agreement.
Does everybody have, in their contract?
Yeah, we have, everybody's contract.
Everybody have one, you know?
Maybe it's worth sending out via email, then you can look at county wide, it's public documents, and you need the contract.
As a public document, the media can have it also, correct?
Anything we do. Okay, so.
Well, I'm, I think this is a good start, but I'd like to, the other, I think we need a little bite to it, I think this. Employees will be offered to park there.
So, Tan, as a follow-up, can you email the court any call, any parking policy we have out there that's acted in the manual today?
I'll look for it, we got a word. Can, can the sheriff?
I wrote the manual, there is.
There's not. Because there never was a parking garage.
No, that's right, that's right.
It was just the service parking and street parking.
When I wrote it, we didn't get part of what it says.
So, Scott, is this something you'd be also, uh, been willing to help the court with? Since you wrote the original manual, there is something.
Yeah, once we come to a policy, I think it looked, I, I structured the manual, so we could put new policies in pretty easily. I think this will be one we want to probably publicize maybe more than we do all the other provisions of the manual that are going to be posted.
Yeah.
Uh, but.
Is there a template that you can email?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Can you run that?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll work with Ted, once we have a final version of it, it will be in that format for quick plug-and-play, and I'll, we'll give Brandon, make sure it goes in on the, the version that's on the internet, so.
Okay, all right, thank you. Let's see if I know, uh, put it, uh, in, on our podcast, so everybody sees it as opposed, as opposed, okay? I mean, you haven't said yes, you. I just wonder, I mean, no, yeah, we're just, just a draft, but you'll even the template out.
Once we, yeah, it'll be in the format, but, once we've got at least a proposal ready, uh, then yeah, it's easy enough to put in the same format for, for policies.
So it would be set, decided in two weeks, we will have this, it will be done?
We can do that, we would, I think I can think of it, because we would appreciate it, but we don't know what we want for policies.
Right.
Pretty much, you are employed here, you shall park in the parking garage.
Or, or you shall not park, according to the grounds of what is required. If you, if you talk about some feedback, that's your right.
And, and we've dialogued quite some time on this court, I'm hoping this feedback helps provide direction. I mean, if we need to sit down a special meeting to do that, that we can all be there, we probably need to schedule that. But I think we've provided a lot of feedback since November around October, that we would like the policy to look like.
Well, I think, I think that's, as Commissioner Charles was told, that, uh, we didn't have, or, or any type of language that, uh, we were able to put these in there, and then be able to make a business of running back and forth.
Yes, it's fine.
I like this one paragraph very well, I think, for sure, he's, one, and where he reached, that's the use of that access schedule we've already done. An access card that isn't used on sixteen or more days during a sixty-day calendar period. They need to get it some leeway, because of sickness or, or off of training or whatever. And then we also, the words that, exceptions can be granted, people with disabilities, other things, kind of happens.
But how are we going to monitor the current, how are we going to do that? City said that they, they could do that, they would cost, they'd have like a special name.
Yeah, it's five hundred dollars. I'll be for it, yeah, this one. I mean, y'all, okay, y'all. I'm pretty sure men, tell me where to send it.
But I remember it's all going, uh, without barriers, without, uh, anything like that.
What's the enforcement going to be? And who's going to enforce it?
I think that's up to those elected officials, of who is.
You're talking about putting the policy, so.
Well, you're talking, you're talking about putting in a policy that says you shall park in the garage and you shall not park in, in the parking lot. What's, what's the?
I don't think that happens.
You know what I think happens, Sheriff? I think that people start to self-control is, is honestly what I think happens.
We don't have, I don't know if it'll drive what car.
I'm not sure.
The second thing is, is you're gonna have to change all your parking times that you're out there because all of them say you can park there as long as you have county business.
I'm not sure if, I'm not sure if they play a policy that say you will park in the parking lot.
Right, I would agree with that. I would agree with that.
We can.
Say, here's your parking option.
Yeah, I think the stick that the county has is the ability to say, the, the parking we're going to make available to you at no cost to you as an employee is that in the parking garage. Uh, if we, you know, again, I'm, I'm making suggestions, the policy is up to you, but, uh, you can say, the service lots that are not in parking lot are reserved for juror use and for those who are coming to that business, citizens who are not employees coming to that business. You know, again, I, I would, I, I'm almost, I, I kind of agree with, with Commissioner McGee. At this point, you might believe yourself some leeway of what you're going to, you know, uh, and say, anyway, I'm getting ahead of myself. You can say, parking that we're making available to you is in the parking garage. If you choose to park on the street, that's on you. That, that's, you know, you, you're subject to take it to pay whatever fee or fee is. The service lots are reserved for the other. And now, the problem, of course, is exactly what the sheriff has pointed out. And that's, that's the enforcement of that. Uh, just like you, I, you know, I, I, there was a while that I could tell you pretty well what the car is belonging to people who work over at the state plant were, uh, but, uh, yeah, I don't, I don't track what people were trying to.
I mean, we can, we, we're trying to solve for a problem before we have the policy. And I understand Sheriff what you're saying, we need an undertone of enforcement, but that's not our lane, right? Our lane is the administrative policy. There's a lot of creative things you could do. You could do an anonymous hotline. People will start to self-control. If I'm walking in the garage and someone else is not, you know.
It's already going.
Yeah, it already goes to the drive. People are doing that now, yes.
Yeah, I don't think you want to.
But I know. Yes, yes.
I think, I think we all have to remember that when we come to work, in the parking lot or in front of the street, we're taking away from somebody that's not going to be here. Exactly, because they're, they're limited as to how they can get in both the buildings. And if they're handicapped or some sort of special, you know, I've watched people.
That goes back to county.
Live along for lack of better words, but around this whole building trying to get in because they park down there, the wrong, on the, yeah, on the street or something. And so I think that's what we all have to keep in mind as we, you know, we come here where, and, you know, we are, you know, we're working for the taxpayers. We are. And I know that's going to, some people like, you know, whatever, but we are. And I think it does take away from people trying to come to this building to do business. So, that's just, I do sense of, I consider that to be unfair.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
This guy is so good. Okay, um, twenty one, formal proposal number one, one, three, five, next one, six, we do want to be open of, consider next fund we're doing. Formal proposal for additional, we are with a one become zero, two, three percent increase coming in as a lab in the proposal. If you don't want to, they're still addressing today the parking.
Yes.
And we just awarded this last year's talk.
Okay.
I noticed that they actually like realized it, but I don't think we have any issues with Sheriff Thomas.
I've just a quick question. I think we've been with this company for, for a while, I think.
But we make it, this was a new award.
Right, but the same company, do they not, it's been the same one. I just, I want to make sure, next year is when we're going out for rebid. No, we just rebid.
This is a good, it's got five years.
So this, this is another five year? Yes, we just awarded this two thousand and sixteen, went out for a full. So this is just another year onto that five years. Okay, all right, thank you.
I move that we approve thirty one.
Attention, center meals, for the addition here. Two, three, standing increase for me.
I have a motion, second on favor, ready to run here. Four, zero, thank you. Number twenty two, Potter County law enforcement, downtown sheriff administration, a basement, consider next fund we're doing. All of the EZIQC buy board contract, number C five, two, zero, next one, six, to Alan. That's, uh, slightly, in the amount of twenty six thousand nine dollars seventy two cents.
This is on our job order contract, so it does not, uh, that Alan, this, uh, job order, so I attribute it in his office and he's okay to do it. Is that just to get the property ready to knock it down? So this is, okay. So what's the timeline for this?
We look for this after around first.
And then that's for the abatement piece or the?
Yeah, the abatement, demolition, following right after that.
Thank you. I make a motion that we approve the buyback, buy board contract as presented to the court.
Make a motion, second on favor, ready to run here. Four, zero, thank you. Twenty three, surplus property disposal, consider next on disposing of the attached list of items that did not sell at auction.
Uh, the only thing they didn't sell was the highlighted items, so I'm gonna try to see if my, um, auction personnel could maybe see if we can get these donated, and if not, I think that happens in some way. I don't know if they're in trash, hopefully not, and I'm trying to see if they're going to be these.
Do we still send out to the, there's that United Way lister or all the nonprofits out there? Okay, see what we can do. And there's sure other listers, but you know.
First you could make to the, to the, to the.
That's not, I was hoping the highlights.
Make a motion, second.
I move that we, uh, act on disposal of the tax first items that did not sell.
Again, have a motion, second on favor, ready to run here. Four, zero, thank you. Potter County Projects, Mr. Heer.
Mr. Heer, Mr. Quigley, uh, the vehicle maintenance garage, the substantial completion on the street, three, twenty six. Uh, we have received certificate of occupancy on it. We've got a form punch list on it. Currently right now, but general contractor, so if you're correct at work in that building. The law enforcement in the site, uh, the original substantial completion date was January the twenty eighth. I think sticking that out to February the eighteenth, that is for the building and the site, the adjacent site around the building. Uh, we had a few items that came up. Uh, some of the furniture, equipment is already starting to be installed at this time, uh, dispatch is in. Uh, Brandon's got a lot of his equipment out there, uh, getting ready to be installed, this issue, uh, area, some of their lockers are put in. The, uh, first punch list that we will be performing on this, on the architect and the engineers will be, uh, February twenty first, twenty second, and twenty third. We will come back and for our second punch, punch list period will be, uh, March the sixth, the seventh, and the eighth. We do have furniture, no matter what, going in on March the twelfth, uh, through the remainder of the month. And as a sheriff and M C Feds, and they will start buying, I believe, around the first of April. The, uh, site work that's going on out there, the, the contractors have, have built behind on that. The, uh, all of the site work was originally supposed to be completed, that was under the base bid with, or the base bid contract. That did not include the additional site work that I bought to the commissioner's court. Uh, if you recall, uh, we had a P R thirty eight come to y'all some time ago. The, uh, cost we projected to at that time was seven hundred something thousand dollars, where it was actually able to get that cost in, I think, five hundred twenty thousand. So that particular work plus the original work in the site base bid, right now, as it's planned, uh, we're looking right around mid-July to complete all the additional site work after. That's where we had some notes that we were correcting, cleaning the property up, out there as well. And, uh, Sheriff, I believe you'd like to produce some symmetrical dedication, just on the.
Just, uh, we're gonna do it on the seventh of March, we'll be there at ten o'clock. I'll be there in person now, just waiting on, waiting on them to finish building something.
Mike, a quick question on other projects. I called up some of the stadium inventory list. I haven't heard anything.
All I've known is that, uh, Nick, this is, y'all, he's gonna work with Mike, and they were going to go through and clean everything up. Last I heard of that, Mike said that he would get some of his kids, some of the kids out there to go through and help clean that up. That is the last.
And the purchases he's not calling, you know, it's hard to, so could we see if they could follow up and just let us know it's done? I just want to make sure that it is done. I think about everything this court is ordering, and I just want someone to tell us. Yep.
I think, I think that was, uh, the court charged with this court to me.
I'm more probably saying that. Most of it was a trash.
I have some questions of, who's trash would it be? And some ones I've heard, Potter County trash.
Mike said that he would throw it away, and Nick, I told him, you need to, we'll get, we'll rinse the dumpsters, we'll put it out there, put it in. Uh, Mr. Fuller has completed what he said he would do, the press box that's on top of the, uh, stadium out there, he's got roof put on it, got it, so he's taken care of.
I just wanted to throw one more. Here goes out to Sebastian in his crew. You know, we had a dirt pile out there, we were going to try and hit the roof in part of this landscape scope out there. And, um, I was gonna add twenty days to project time, plus they were going to start to save about a thousand dollars to move the pile there. Sebastian did that in about three days, so here goes Dan. So if you'll remember that, anybody.
He had a good budget year this year. He had a good budget year. He should be good for a little while.
What he did out there for us was, was tremendous. I was gonna say for us, he's like.
I would have been, I would have been.
I was gonna do it for him.
Speaking of communication, should I come on? Thank you, thank you. Okay, okay. Okay, very good. Thank you. Number twenty five, employment items, consider next on the poll, employment items, facilities maintenance, the hiring of Michelle Mahana as groundskeeper effective January sixteen, twenty eighteen. Um, do have to say it's the first ever female, um, groundskeeper we've ever had. Carter Cameron, so, and Roman Bridge, the hiring of Ricardo Castillo as maintenance tech, as replaced in front of Miguel Michael, my skills, effective February twenty twenty eighteen. Make a motion, a big, big movement, I'd ask for dinner. Make a motion, second on favor, ready to run here. Joe report, we have five hundred and sixty eight people in our jail today, eighty eight of those are females, we have non childrens or anywhere else. Uh, eighty two percent felons, ten percent minors. Do we have any county insurance on it?
No.
No executive session, do the items for next time.
I'd like to, I was, I was thinking that we're gonna have a report back on the constables and, uh, I might, or is that facility usage that, uh, back to the last court section?
We had, we had, they met with Mike, it was a huge misunderstanding. They came to see me, we got it all figured out, they got back with Mike, correct? We don't need to, we don't.
So everything's good?
Everything's good, drive, Georgia.
A lot about the area up there.
Mike's moving to the sheriff's, Vicky's moving to Mike's, just constantly moving into proportion of.
No.
No.
I'm moving into the, with sheriff's vacay, I'm also gonna move into the area that I vacay. Vicky will remain.
Oh, okay.
So the facts are good?
So we're all good, Brian? Y'all good?
We put the burn ban on next agenda.
Burn ban, yeah.
Brad is meeting.
We all have chairs too, the next, and then it's moving to Thursday.
What is that?
It was something that drugs have been called for. I just, if he, if he needed that, okay.
We can decide if, if he tried to.
Or decide about this, and what is. Maybe you can change it.
It doesn't matter, can you change it?
Okay, I'll sign. Okay, well, some.
I've just, the only other thing I have, um, I, there's a small, little, quick meeting after court for, that we have requested for those that help with government day. Um, so we're gonna do just a couple of housekeeping, and this is just an FYI for your calendar. Um, we're looking at April twenty third for our annual Potter County Government Day. So for that little committee, our working committee, I think we're just gonna be now in a little commission conference, I think for ten minutes probably.
Okay, and just to remember tomorrow, is our other commissioner's court to, to.